I called to order a special meeting of the Oak Island Planning Board for July 27, 2023, the purpose of which is continue our discussion of the table of uses, in particular, the special uses. Since this is a special meeting, I'll just say for those out in the audience, we do not take public comments during the, during our special meetings, as is also the common practice of planning of the town council. But we appreciate you being here and thank you for coming. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me state too that I got an email from David Brantley last night. He is stuck with work in Columbia, South Carolina. Thought he could get back, but he's not able to. And Tim Pittman is taking his daughter to work and should be here eventually. And so we do have a quorum. And so we will get started. We had an item in our, on our regular meeting last week about discussing, it really came from our special meeting on June the 28th, having a discussion about what the planning board members' priorities were in addressing the table of uses. And we agreed after some discussion to send in our priorities, kind of a little homework assignment, if you will, and discuss at a later meeting. I did submit some groupings of some priorities, sticking with the addressing the special uses without supplemental regulations, which was clearly council's desire at their last regular meeting. And Terry also submitted what she had submitted previously for some priorities that she has. Don't want to put anybody on the spot for various reasons. Any of the rest of you may or may not have been able to put anything in particular together. So I would like to start before discussing what I have and whatever else Terry would like to say about what she submitted. I'd like to start by just asking each one of other members individually what your priority thinking is on the table of uses. If you'd rather, like I said, I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything. If you'd rather hear what I or Terry have to say first and just listen to that discussion and weigh in on that, that's fine too. What's your pleasure?
I'll go, I'm happy to go first, Madam Chair.
All right.
You usually start on the other end, so I'm looking for...
Well, I try to save the best for last, Bob.
It started, it might be a worthwhile endeavor to, I mean, I did pull out the whiteboard to kind of document notes for everyone as we go through. So then we've got something for everybody to look at for discussion too. But that's, once again, the pleasure of the board. If you guys want me to stand up and take some notes that you can refer back to while we're, while we're going.
While we're going, please do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am left-handed and this is a whiteboard, so please bear with me.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
Oh, Madam Chair, I would like to ask, I have some comments, but then I have a question. I'm going to ask the question first because it relates to my, my comments. I'd like to understand what the purpose of this effort is and what the timeline of the effort is. Because I'm sure the effort is, the purpose is something like, review the table of uses so that we can make changes. The question that I have is when would we be making changes? What is our estimation? Because this board and the town council have had our UDO essentially in place for the three years that I've been here. We've done the tree ordinance three times and then we've tabled the tree ordinance into the DARA committee. And I believe, and I've said it many times, so I won't belabor it, that the UDO is not protecting the residents of this town. And other people can disagree, and that's, that's the way this works. And if you disagree, you should say so and disagree, that's fine. So we put forth a bunch of UDO changes. The planning staff does not recommend UDO changes to us, at least in the way that I have. And the exposure to the town are the things like the Boardwalk Hotel, which we could have many more of them because there's plenty of spots that they're legally allowed. And then, and then the, like a Myrtle Beach miniature golf type of place, which, which may or may not have been proposed already for behind beach life. And the reason we don't know if it's really going to be a Myrtle Beach style miniature golf is because their application was so weak and had so few details, no one can really tell. Town council couldn't even tell what it was to approve it. They pushed it back to the petitioner and it's in limbo at the moment. So because the planning staff is not recommending any changes, in my opinion, that means they don't want any changes. Now we're here to talk about changes, and I think it's important to the people in this town that we don't just sit around here and say we're going to analyze the UDO and say we're going to think about making changes, when frankly, I believe that this is a sham. It's another kick the can down the road committee, like the DARA Tree Committee. I am looking forward to the output of the DARA Tree Committee, which was supposed to give us results in July, and we'll see what the results are. If the results come out that we're going to make changes to the tree protection overlay, the Kerry Committee, the impervious, and the other tree protection overlay, the DARA switch parking for trees, if we get results out of the DARA Committee, that would be great. I doubt it. If we get the results out of here, I doubt it. We, we took the action, this board took action to put in some changes as preemptive changes. And they were passed in June, and then they were rescinded, rescinded. I bet you this planning board hasn't rescinded much in 20 years. But they, the things that we put forth in June and were approved were rescinded in July, which means they won't happen. They won't get passed the town council, the planning board won't, won't advance those changes. So is this another kick the can down the road committee? I believe it is. I believe it's a sham and deceptive to the folks that live in this town. And I'd like to hear when we expect, I think we need to put a little timetable in place that says, in three months, we will be proposing changes to town council. And then I ask every one of you to watch in three months and see what comes out of this. Because it won't be, Madam Chair, I can just finish, I am ready to finish. If we don't, if we don't have a, if we don't have a real timeline, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. So Madam Chair, if somebody would tell me what the timeline is, we have four or five people out here now, there are plenty of people who deserve an answer. Is this planning board, does this planning board believe that the UDO is fine the way it is? And that's, that's a position, or it needs work? And the work would be what we output as changes, or what we delay as kick the can? So Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I don't think you give a full picture of either the tree stakeholder group or the recension of the actions, which was based on council's action, the first set of recommendations that got sent to them, which eliminated uses without doing the supplemental regulations and put those properties existing, which our discussion has been that you included and said you don't have any trouble, any problem with what we have. But that makes those non-conforming uses and puts them at risk financially, as well as a myriad of other ways, if something happened with that in the interim. And so council remanded that back to this planning board to do some further work on the supplemental regulations. And the other items that we rescinded were similar in that regard, in terms of creating non-conforming uses in the interim of going through the process as it should be. And it isn't that staff, I have never had any sense that it is, whether staff wants to or not, we have professional advice from our planning department, and we have been ignoring it. Council did not ignore that, sent it back and asked us to approach this whole process differently. As for the tree group, we have members here discussed last time, and that was the intent for them to get started, not report to us at our July meeting, but when they finish. We got a report that they have had, had had three meetings, we're going to have another one this week, and that information would be coming to us in August with, as much as Matt can do in terms of draft regula, draft language for us to consider that reflects the output of that committee. As for what we are doing here today, I have always seen since we started on this process in our June special meeting, and what we moved to today from our regular meeting, that our further input, we're giving input to Matt on what our priorities are and what we have seen in the table of uses and the issues that are there, because we have spent a good deal of time with the UDO in the last year. And so that is valuable input and feedback to him. There is also a stakeholders group that along with, I believe, our economic development director is being put together. And there will be a public forum opportunity for that as well, so that it doesn't, so that everybody has a chance for input on the table of uses. And I expect some report out of that at our August meeting and taking our feedback. And we certainly said a good deal in the last couple of meetings about stakeholder input being important, that that is what we are doing. We are getting that stakeholder input and allowing Matt to get that stakeholder input, which is a common professional planning practice. And that from that, I would expect to have language drafted that we could consider in September. And so council would be seeing the fruits of that labor, perhaps from the tree ordinance, tree stakeholder group in September, and certainly the most critical pieces of the table of use changes in October. Now, that's the timeline I have my, in my head, just from thinking through how that process should be given time and effort to run. And if Matt has anything different to add to that, I welcome his input.
Really, I just weigh in on the, the portion of the question that relates to the purpose of this meeting today. At the, at the June special meeting that we had, the board did have some discussion. They were looking for ways to get input out there for their priorities. I suggested that we take a few minutes in the meeting to come up with those things. Some of the members felt that that wasn't enough time, so the idea was to send it, let you guys take some time at home, think about what your priorities are, come back today and have that input. So really, just to provide some framework here, usually in a meeting like this, it's a good idea to start off with each person taking a few minutes to, without any discussion or anything, similar to a brainstorming session, throw out your priorities, throw out your inputs, so everybody has a chance to have that discussion, and then break it into discussion after for are there, is whatever you guys want to discuss. Is there something that somebody else said that you didn't think of? Is there overlap? Is there one thing that maybe rises to the top, or several things that rise to the top? So that's, that's the extra input I have on that.
So having said all that, Bob, do you have anything further that you would like to add, just at a 30,000-foot level or maybe a 5,000-foot? Are there particular uses in the table of uses that you are the most concerned about?
Well, Madam Chair, we approved several changes in June that I raised around the table of uses and the special uses permits. This town is at risk. There are people who believe this town is at risk. If you, if you live near the Boardwalk Hotel, or you live there, or if you, if you live near the miniature golf place that's going to go in, and if you think your town is at risk, or if you think your residential neighborhood is going to get damaged by drive-throughs that go around different restaurants, and, and that we lose our mom and pops like the Fish House and we go, if you think we're at risk, then you would agree with me that this town council and this planning board is not taking action. And instead of saying we're not taking action, we just say what you guys just said. And so I'm not going to belabor this meeting, because that's another tactic, right, is to just run the clock. And so we can get out of here by doing nothing at 9:30, we don't have to stay till 12:30 to do nothing. So I will go back, remain quiet, and, and proceed, because I hope we'll work on the special uses or some of the risks. And I think to the people of this town, they'll judge what we do by what we actually change in the UDO. If we change nothing, then we did nothing. And that means the UDO is fine, and the trend the town is on is fine. And if you disagree, then you disagree. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Just real quick, Mr. Callahan, do you want to enumerate those things for the, for what we've got up here? Drive-throughs, hotels, special use permits, et cetera?
We could look at the, yes, everything we approved in June.
Okay. Just right, June, June items up here?
June items, the drive-throughs, the SUPs, and the signage, those are the ones we put in, in, in June. And there's the amusements and so forth, but nobody really wants to hear about that, so we'll back off on, I will back off. Members of the, Madam Chair.
Well, and, and Bob, I, I...
I don't think anybody can read that, I certainly can't.
As you were talking...
Sorry.
It's too small, it's too small for us.
As, as you were talking before, I would have, I would have said that you have already put forth your priorities.
Exactly.
Thank you.
I would think that I have.
Tim? Do you have anything in the table of uses that you want to chime in on that gives you particular angst?
Not anything in particular, just I'm still relatively new enough that I'm coming up, all this is all, this new ground to me. I see, I see how fast we're developing, I see the, the Williamson track, all the things that are being thrown on us, like, Bob's, I think he's on a good vein with, with how fast we're developing and it's going to outrun us. And I'm just trying to feel all this out and come up, like Terry and Kerry, I'm amazed that you guys, y'all have been here and done this so long, I'm, I'm just still in my learning curve, so. I don't have anything right now in, in particular, but, but I do have some things that are, I'll bring up at some point, I guess.
Okay. Natasha?
What I'm hearing from people in the town is it's somewhat of a mixed bag, but for the most part, they do feel like we are exposed to a certain extent. They're asking questions. The process is the process, I understand that, but it does seem like it's taken a little longer than we all would like.
It always does.
I, I understand. So I, I hope that we can push some things forward and move on and feel like we've made some accomplishments today with things.
But do you have any particular areas in the special uses?
It's all important to me, to be honest.
All right. Kerry?
I'm doing, we've...
You're mixing it up, okay.
No, I'm not mixing it up. I'm going back to where I started at the beginning of the meeting, which is, I have sent, I have sent in something that's in the packet, Terry has sent in something that's in the packet. We have not received something. And, and quite frankly, you know, you know, Matt's additional comments reminded me that when we met on the 28th and we were starting to do this, and you didn't feel like that maybe everybody had had enough time to do that, and so...
Okay, thank you. Well, if I could, I'd like to back up just a second, because I have a couple of questions for staff before we proceed. And I apologize, Madam Chair, for belaboring the point, but I, I'd like for us to set a schedule of these special meetings and have those established so that we know what the, the, the dates are, and have these things on our calendar so that we have a routine to address this table of uses effort, first of all. So I'd like us to not leave the meeting today till we have a schedule of those meetings on our calendars that everybody can agree on and that we can, to Natasha's point, move this whole effort forward. The other question, the question I have for staff is, Matt, I know you talked about some time ago about reformulating the table of uses using SIC, NACs code, restructuring, regrouping. And so can you explain to us where that stands? Because if we delve into these, you know, many pages of table of uses and then they're all reworked, doesn't that sort of negate what effort we've gone through in terms of, of defining all of them?
Sure, so, wow, that's really loud, I apologize for that. The effort to update and modernize the table of uses is proceeding along at the schedule that we presented to town council. So right now, as Madam Chair mentioned, that's in the stage where we're gathering stakeholder and public engagement feedback. Those efforts are kicking off in the next two weeks. From there, we would report that engagement effort out to the planning board and then start drafting from there. So you're going to have a report out of that in August, and then we'll start drafting stuff for unit review in September. So based on, I mean, your input and priorities can be as high level or low level as you want to. If you want to say, you know, hey, we want to address everything, all special uses, et cetera, you know, that's valuable. If there's a use or something like that, that you think is particularly important that you'd like to really take some time to crack down on, that's certainly important too. So really, this, this is the planning board's opportunity to set your priorities within that effort going forward, whether that's, hey, we want to make sure that amusement uses are grouped and categorized appropriately, drive-throughs are defined and regulated appropriately, things like that. Or if it's much more high level, like, you know, hey, I'm ready to work on everything, you know, that, that's valuable feedback for us, for sure.
So the stakeholders you're talking about is the business stakeholder group that, that Hallie's putting together from an economic development perspective?
Well, we're, we worked with Hallie to develop, to figure out some contacts just for individual reach-outs for stakeholder input, but like I said, we're also going to have some, some public engagement for regular citizens to provide input as well, as Pam.
Okay. And then as to what we start to address today as we get into the detail, just for the public's benefit, we've created in our UDA, UDO audit, a 40-page Excel spreadsheet of the priorities of things that needed to be addressed. And Madam Chair has kindly organized this for us and put it in a nice format. And within this format, some of the table of uses are prioritized, some changes to the table of uses are prioritized. So as opposed to looking at individual board members' priorities, which I think the public could perceive as somehow not exactly objective, I propose that we utilize this UDO audit document with the table of uses priorities, the red stars, and we attack those in the order by section that they exist, because I think that's the way we make sure that we check them all off and there is no perceived preference or inappropriate priority to anything that we look at on the table of uses. So that would be my recommendation as to how we approach this. I think it helps... I think it helps us all be more organized because all we have to do is go through here and pull the stars out and address those within the table of uses. Because we've already said, and Council has already agreed, that the UDO audit brought out some important things that we need to amend. And so that's just my commentary, and certainly we can make a further discussion about it. But as to my priorities within the table of uses, Matt, I know you were waiting for me to get there.
Right, don't worry about that.
I, I think if I think about our explosive growth and where the town is going, I see at maybe 10,000, 15,000 feet, maybe four areas that I think we need to focus on. And that is recreational. I think, I think Bob has mentioned that, and we've had, we've discussed it in several meetings. So I'm looking at this in a broad grouping of the table of uses, okay, just for everybody's edification. Also, on the residential section of the table of uses, I think there needs to be some better specification of residential, what, where, why? Again, because of our growth. The other thing is on the retail side. I agree with, with my colleague, Mr. Callahan, as far as restaurants and drive-throughs. We want this community to be pedestrian-friendly, walkable. There are issues around that, so it's important that we address. As our retail continues to grow, to service our growing community, I think that focusing on the retail definitions are important as well. And finally, with the, with the add of our Economic Development Officer, Hallie, whom we welcome, and I think, is she here today? You know, I think it'll be important that we look at the commercial business section of the UDO and make sure that we, the Planning Board and the Council, are aligned with the economic development initiatives that the town puts forth. So I think generally, high level, those are the things that I care about.
So if you would, so with the residential uses, you're thinking about what residential uses go in what zoning districts? Am I understanding that correctly?
Sure. And, and what does our community need to go forward? You know, what, what do we, you know, there's a lot of different towns are defining residential in a lot of different ways, right? With family units changing and all those kind of things. So I think we should think about where we want our community to go in terms of residential and, and where those different types of residential habitats are allowed. Maybe we want different things than what we have today.
Okay.
Sorry, so long. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, not at all.
That's fine.
But I, but I still, I, I still think that as opposed to going with individual areas or whatever in terms of prioritizing our work, I, I really would like for us to just start with this document, our guiding document, and focus on the table of uses priorities that we have already defined through the UDO audit, with all due respect. And can, we can have further discussion on that, Madam Chair.
Well, and I, I think you make a good point, Carrie, in that we don't want to lose sight of what we have in the audit document, absolutely. And some of, some of those items, the items that were in green were things that have been added, that, that weren't in Wes's original document, but that the Planning Board added as we were going through that process of something to come back to. And I went back through all the notes, all the video, whatever, everything, minutes to make sure that we didn't, because he was not keeping up with putting in the additional things that we did.
Right.
And so to make sure that we didn't miss anything that came out of that discussion, that should all be in that document. Now, and of course, a lot of those things that were items that we came up with and that were things that, that Wes brought forward in the, I know we keep calling housekeeping, but it was not major policy changes, and there were some things that were easy enough to do. But in the, the first round of all the amendments that we have already sent to Council, and those are still on here and checked off, yeah, Council's done this, check, check, we've sent it, we've, we've done our work, Council's approved it. So, so that's, it's not like nothing has been done in this whole process over the last year. But I do appreciate you bringing that up. I was going to add that to my discussion, so we'll be, I'm sure we're all in agreement on that. Before I talk through my groupings, Terry, do you have anything?
I do have some additional comments, Madam Chair. Thank you. It's been a couple months since my items were submitted, and so I've spent a fair amount of time going back and looking at this and, and thinking about this. And I've looked at Madam Chair's list. I could, I could very easily concur with Carrie's suggestions. What I would offer is that if you look at the table of uses, we have about 47 lines on the table of uses that have the S. And my opinion is, is that as a rule of thumb, S's should be no. We should not have, there may be a few exceptions, but as a general rule, we should not have S's on our table of uses. So to me, it seems like, although, like I said, I think Carrie has a very logical way, and I like, I like the fact that we have a way to, to use the document that's already in place, I, I would not be, I would not be adverse to going through each line that has an S on it and, and dealing with them in that fashion. I think our second priority needs to be the SS's. They do have supplemental conditions, but are they adequate? And so I think we need to look at each one of those, and then that starts to become a really hefty list with the SS's. And then finally, I think the third group are the PS's, and that's permitted with supplemental conditions. Again, are those supplemental conditions adequate? And do they define how the town of Oak Island wants to identify itself and what the town's vision should be? I'll say right now, the town does not have a vision, but we should have one, and we need for our supplemental conditions to support that vision. So I, I think our highest priority, and I think we've heard Town Council say it, is to deal with the S's. Figure out what we need to do with those to get the protections in place that are, that are needed. I also agree with my colleague, Mr. Callahan. I'm concerned, this is at least the second meeting now that we've spent talking about the process. Folks, let's get on with it. Let's do the work.
Thank you, Terry.
I have said before, and will say again, that I think having just an S by itself is, I have always opposed that. Now, we got rid of a lot of those when we were, and again, as I have said before, we got rid of the RMU and CMU, which ultimately ended up being illegal. And so everything with special uses under those. But not getting rid of the S's, not having that, when I say getting rid of the, just for clarification, when I say get rid of the S's, I'm not thinking in terms necessarily of striking them all together. I'm thinking of, we're going to, if that truly rises to a special use and shouldn't be permitted with all the other regulations that we already have, if there are additional requirements that need to be in place, then we need to figure out what those are and, or either just make it a permitted use. And I think that was the, too, the message from Council, yes, they, and, and still, you'd have a special use permit, we wouldn't get rid of it altogether, and you'd go through the process, but you'd have some additional well-thought-out, common items that need to be looked at or a standard needs to be set in particular for those uses in those areas. And I agree that, you know, discussion of table uses, special uses, is how our agenda item is written out. And so I certainly have never had an idea, for clarification, what Carrie was saying, going down through each use line by line. There has to be some way of organizing this, and I think we're getting to that point, and that would certainly be helpful to Matt in moving forward in language, just like we didn't, just like we were able to send some things forward during the regular audit process. I don't see this as a one-and-done type of scenario. Having said that, the way that I addressed putting together some priorities were centered around the S's, but also looking at some of the places where we have just S's, there are similar uses or what could be, depending on definitions, is another thing we don't have for a lot of these things. We need good, clear definitions. And so they, they kind of go in a group. The beach club, private club overlay district, there's certainly some things in that overlay district that are S's or SS's that have absolutely nothing to do with beach clubs. Tim, you and Natasha should remember all that bruhaha some years ago. So what was in place for that, and that was a very important protection to this town, is completely lost in the UDS. Second one captures a lot of what Bob has brought forward, and we have already discussed, as the recreational uses concerns, particularly with the special uses. But as I pointed out, perhaps in our special meeting in June, what I saw was, because in the previous code, we had all, most all of that, you know, one of the things that happened in between the previous land use ordinance and when we went to a UDO was having this granular level of uses more and more spread out. So we had well over 100 uses in the old code, groupings, and we have over 300 in the UDO. And, you know, one of the recommendations was to kind of go back the other way and with, deal with some of the particulars within that through definitions and through supplemental But we have, commercial recreation establishments was carried over from the code that is defined in the UDO. And it lists in that definition a lot of the single uses that are permitted in other places with special uses. So there's a definite conflict there between the commercial recreation establishments and recreational uses and those definitions, and how they do not align. And many of those, several of those uses were in the list that have been brought forward before by Mr. Callahan. A third priority, and these don't necessarily have to be in this order, drive-through type And I don't know, like, the restaurants, but it strikes me that things like car washes and banks are drive-through, or have drive-through. I know one of the, from my experience, the only drive-through on this island that creates traffic problems is one of the banks down at the end of Oak Island Drive, and how that traffic flows through there at the stoplight. And so if we're going to look at drive-throughs, I think it would be appropriate to look at, at other things that, that might have either actual drive-throughs or drive-through characteristics. And there may be other things to do with restaurants besides separate them in drive-through and walk-ups and various other kinds of things. But I know that one of the ways to deal with the issues that can be created by drive-throughs is, help me out here, Miss, vehicle stacking requirements, how many vehicles you have to, how much room you have to have for vehicles to stack up? And so that, I think, is an important tool that needs to be in the supplemental regulations that go with that. And those can be different for, we've got the CLD, certainly has a different, you know, it's one-size-fits-all, doesn't necessarily work. The characteristic of our CLD districts on the mainland are totally different from what they are on Oak Island Drive, and even some remaining, although most of what's in the beach area now has been, and even in the Yopon beachfront, has been consumed with, because those are largely CR district, commercial recreation, and they have been consumed with single-family residential. So we have lost a lot of commercial area to that. Fourth priority, we had done quite a bit of work in working out density caps and what, you know, one of the, everything was stripped out of it. Anything that we, any kind of density requirements that we had previously was stripped out and does not appear in the UDO. And it was stated well, you know, they'll, they can only fit so much in one of their fit, depends on all the other regulations and blah, blah, blah. It is amazing what somebody can put on a piece of property if they have free reign to do so. And that density speaks to intensity and traffic, and, yeah, we're, we have a lot of people here, every one of those little squares gets built on, that is, that property owns right to do so, and that's going to make it. Certainly seem crowded to those of you, those of us who have been here for a long time, but even, even otherwise, more and more people are, you know, we have a lot of second home owners, we have a lot of investment property, more and more people are here more and more of the year. And so in, in particular, you know, I listed several residential uses, and I also look at hotels and motels in this category. You know, you can, you can determine a cap on the number of units that a hotel can have, say, per acre, just like you can do a cap on multifamily, so many units per acre. You know, when you've got subdivided lots, the size of those lots tends to give you your density. So if I've got, you know, like in R6, I've got 55 by 120-foot lot, that's 6.6 units, houses, per acre. In the CLD, we used to use, we had a 7,500 square feet was the minimum lot size, and so that was the density used for the multifamily developments that are out there, AKA the preserve. But those protections are no longer in place for any future development. And we have nothing, absolutely no standards for rooming and boarding houses. Now, there are certainly rooming and boarding houses that are done in other communities that are nice and not a problem, but there are specific supplemental regulations for that and, and how many units of boarding you can have within and what the, many other arrangements. But we don't even have a definition for it. And my fifth one, and several of these are spoken to, not only the ones I've already talked about, but in my fifth priority are also- and several of these are spoken to, not only the ones I've already talked about, but in my fifth priority are also did look again at the items that we have from the UDO audit and they're there as well. A lot about outdoor sales, displays, sale of goods, outdoor, indoor. And a lot of these things just, you know, there's one supplemental regulation for all of it. And it doesn't, it just really seems to be confusing and conflicting multiple categories. And what is it exactly that we're trying to accomplish with that? But all of that outdoor and storage or not, that can certainly have an impact on the visual. We've talked a lot about street escape and what our community looks like and what our business areas look like. And so it would seem to me that that would be a part of that bigger picture. And then there were some miscellaneous items, and there's still other special use or even S items. But number six was kind of a catch-all of the ones that were left that struck me as having potential for abuse without further definitions or regulations. And I think a lot of what, I just, like I said, looked at it a little bit differently. Brought in some things that may not have an S per se, that might be related. But certainly most of those come from the S's. And there are still a few more besides the primary ones that still have S's that aren't addressed in anything that either I've put together or that Mr. Callahan has put together are basically town-owned, public outdoor or institutional uses, which I didn't consider to be a threat in terms of what the town is doing. And there's a whole gaggle of educational school type that are all special uses. And I'm not sure what kind of special regulations you would put on that if anybody was interested in putting a school anywhere where, you know, those kind of things typically come up. Since we're in a county school system, we don't have a separate school system here. And the airport's needs have already been addressed with that. Well, and I'll say, I think there's a lot of crossover in what has been said here. What's your preference on how to proceed from this point now that we've gotten some things out on the table, so to speak? Tim?
I want to get you to add put recreation because that was, when, when you mentioned that, that's something that we in, in our line of work, we get the opportunity to hear what it is about our community that draws people here. So we are like the first thing that they encounter as far as trying to move to the, to the area. And recreation is something that we have done since we got this field back in the nineties back here. The town has done an amazing job. I mean, from the first tennis courts we put in to now we've got the, the six pickleball courts, which is a huge draw and you're, I want to talk to you too. We're outrunning what we've, what we're, what we've got to offer. And we can offer more. I mean, there's some easy fixes to it, especially if you're, if you're using a facility or if you're involved in something that the town has got firsthand, then there's some challenges that that we run into as the, as the population grows. So your recreation is something that people come down here because they want to relax. They come down here because they, they want to recreate. So yes, that is a huge one. So yeah, I'm, that's a, that's a, that's a biggie there.
Well, and we don't need to lose sight of, you know, people come here and we're not, a lot of people come here because they want to live like we do year-round for a week or so. But recreational needs, our residents have recreational needs as well.
And there are people that live close by that come here and see what we've got to offer that will end up moving over here because they don't want to drive back and forth all the time to enjoy what we've got. I mean, there's something to be said for being able to just get in the golf cart and come to the concert. When you got to drive across the bridge, that takes a whole lot of the, of the appeal away, so.
If you'll allow me, and certainly you can have additional notes as well, looking at some of these things and what the overlap is, we certainly have a lot of discussion about obviously developing supplemental regulations, which we've discussed quite a bit. Recreation seems to be a common theme, whether that's commercial or public. See, density and housing, I think I would probably group those probably together maybe. Certainly some between drive-throughs, pedestrian-oriented, commercial stuff, walkability. We could probably kind of umbrella all that together. We've got drive through slash you guys feel free to help me out here. What else do we have that go together?
Beach club.
Beach club, good one.
I've got to fix those.
And that could probably even come under a commercial use type of, type of stuff too.
Not really.
No, separate, okay.
That's a, that's a whole animal to itself.
Lost my cap here. Okay, so these are the crossover items. We have special use, I will, I would probably do special use regulations, supplemental and special uses. Maybe lump those together in some way.
And that, that supplemental, like Terry said, could be for a special supplemental or permitted with subs, supplemental rate, supplemental regulations, whether it goes with special use or permitted use would be the same supplemental.
Matt, are we required to have these four definitions of, of uses? P, PSS, SS? Are those statutorily required that we define everything that way?
So if you're going to have special use permits, yes, I would say you need to have a permitted use of special use, et cetera.
S and an SS?
You don't, well, you don't necessarily have to have that. Really, that's a notation to let people know that there are beyond the bare minimum development requirements, additional standards that you might have. So it's really, I mean, you could accomplish that with an asterisk or, you know, there's quite a few ways. But it's really to let somebody know that there's extra standards. And then the, the last thing is where to look for those extra standards.
Right, but I think my point is, I think we're all saying we don't want any more S's without the supplemental regulations.
Correct, and that's fine.
Agreed?
And that's fine, yeah.
So that's what I'm asking, I mean, could, could we not?
We don't have to have just an S.
Get rid of just S's and say that, that we should not have.
But not without putting those regulations in place.
They should all be SS's and those regulations defined and agreed on.
Well, and, and I would, yeah, what we had before, and I think we may have had one, of course, back in the day, before 160D said, you're just going to call the same dog the same name all the way through. You had condition, some people call them conditional uses, some people call them special uses. More of the places that call them conditional uses actually had additional condition. We had, we had, we called them conditional uses, same thing, just a different name. And we had, and granted, some of those condition, conditions, which were same as supplemental regulation. Some of those conditions may not have been as detailed as they needed to be, but some of them were quite good for the critical points, I think. We might have had one that didn't have an additional condition. And then there was a list of the types of things that councils could consider in adding to that. But 160D changed a lot of that. But yeah, essentially what we had before was, and we had some standards that were permitted with standards. A lot of that got put into the, transferred in the UDO, some of it not, and some of it's confused. But yeah, to have just a permitted use, it's either permitted with the general regulations that everybody has, it's permitted with supplemental regulations or a special use with supplemental regulations. And in my mind, whether it's perm, if it's got supplemental regulations, whether it's permitted or it's special, it's still the same regulations. It's just that it has to go through that, rather than being permitted administratively, it has to go through that extra level of coming through council to see if there's some other agreement that the council and the applicant can come to that needs to be addressed in that particular.
I understand that, I just, I'm concerned that we have 47 uses that are S without supplemental regulations. I don't know how we got there. That's bothersome. So I'm glad we're prioritizing those.
Yeah, I didn't understand how we got there in 2017 either. I'm glad we're finally at that point. Talk about going on a long time.
So ma'am chair, I may, we spent the first hour talking, listened to everybody. From what I hear and from the notes I see Matt has taken for us, we're all on the same page. We agree what needs to be worked on. And one person might think we need to approach it a little differently than somebody else. But at some point, we got to make a decision and we got to stop talking about it and start working on it. So I'm asking us to do that now. And, and you're the chair, so I'll defer to you to pick a way to start working on these things and let's start working on them.
Well, we know, I think you said earlier, you'd like to just go through the table and look at those uses that had just that plain S. And that is certainly easy enough to do. I don't think we can sit here and say specifically what those supplemental regulations might be or whether we want to say we don't think it should be there under any circumstance. I mean, how, how, how would you, how are you envisioning approaching that?
Well, I mean, you look at the first one, colleges, universities, community colleges. There's an S in O and I, CB and CLD. We got to make a decision as to if that's an appropriate place for those, three is an appropriate place for those to exist. And then we need to come up with some supplemental regulations. Do we have anything on our books that, that fit in those categories that we can look at and see if it meets the definition? I don't know that we have to reinvent the wheel. There have got to be cities and towns out there that have some kind of supplemental conditions on their books that we can at least start the language with. I don't want to put it on Matt to have to rewrite the whole book from scratch. But we can't just keep sitting here trying to decide how we're going to do it. I think we got to, we just got to pick a way to go and go that way.
Let's just, let's just do that then. Yeah, you're correct. The first S's occur on what is page four in our agenda packet. And yeah, the office and institutional. I'm not even entirely yes.
Let me get Mike to pull up a copy of our official zoning map. Because that might help you, you know, inform some of these decisions as far as your discussion goes. Hang tight just a second.
All right.
Matt, thank you.
Yeah, basically.
All the way to that lake.
There's, there's, there's a very small strip of land, well, it's not all that small, but there, there is a strip just north of the pond there, yeah. Okay, so colleges, university, community college. And I was just going to make a general statement about office and institutional has been in at least the Long Beach Code forever and was in the Town of Oak Island Land Use Plan Code before we got the UDO and it's still there. We have never, ever zoned anything office and institutional. And so my first question would be, why do we still have that district and do we need it? It can sometimes, it has at some times served as a place to park something that you really don't want anybody to do anywhere and they'd have to go through the zoning process, blah, blah, blah. I think that is a poor way of doing business, particularly when you have the conditional zoning tool that we have. And so I would like for Matt to look at eliminating that district altogether.
Agreed.
Matt, is there something we're missing?
Is there something, something I'm missing, please?
Are we putting, are we opening up risk by taking that out?
I mean, certainly if there's uses that are parked there that aren't allowed anywhere else in the town and there's not a
Park them somewhere else.
Public, yeah, that's what, that's the alternative.
Industrial district is the other thing that we have that we don't have anything yet. And I'm not entirely sure that we ever will have. But I'd like to at least, at least take a look at that.
Do you need, do you need a motion for that?
What I, what I see is we're going through with this is if we've got consensus similar to what we did going through the UDO audit process without motion after motion after motion. And so
Okay.
People are making notes. We've got a videotape. Lisa's taking minutes, Matt's making notes. I think we got it covered. That's good with everybody. Get more done. So having said that, you know, the college, university, community college, the only place that, that, the only thing that I can see happening with that is some kind of satellite thing perhaps at some time in the future. But I would think that that would be a mainland location. And so I would say if we're going to do that, that we keep it in the CLD, strike the CB and get the supplemental regulations that we want to go with that.
Regarding that, DARA, college and universities. I remember, I guess it was maybe a year ago, we rezoned some land near the airport per Howie Franklin's request. And one of the things he mentioned was And one of the things he mentioned was starting an aviation school there.
Right, and so that keeps it, that keeps it there.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. And the airport related flight schools, we have in CL, but we have airport related flight schools in CLD and as AD is a permitted use. So that takes, that's done.
Just say we're covered.
Yeah.
So then we would just need to develop some supplemental regulations for the CLDs?
For the CLD, right. Either do supplemental regulations or just obviously it's permitted. Ultimately. Kindergarten nursery schools. Now, R20. And of course, at some point, I guess theoretically, the Williamson Track can still revert back to R20. But we don't have an R20 district except in the area around the golf course, which you can see on the lower right corner of the island portion of town. That is our R20. And that is all residential. And I'm just not seeing a kindergarten nursery school being there. If we're getting rid of O and I, then again, they could potentially put in CLD with SS. Get the S.
So eliminate in O and I and R20, Madam Chair?
Yeah, in other words, treat the kindergarten nursery schools and the college, university, community college, and I would say probably also the school, elementary, secondary, and school private. I'd treat all of those as same as we're doing the college and university.
So eliminate in all residential?
For the private schools, yeah. Now here, it's permitted in CLD. And so the question would be, do we want to permit any of those schools in CLD without having to go through some special use process?
Seems like all of them should have some supplemental regulation.
Well, we'll let Matt tackle that and see what he Now, the only other thing in that category with all the S's, because the trade vocational schools are permitted.
I'm sorry, the libraries?
I was, I'm going back to that.
Okay.
I was just trying to get the school part.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The only other school part that doesn't address would be the trade vocational. And again, I can't see why we would want that in CB, because we have such, so little of that in the CB, CLD. And if we're gonna have supplemental regulations for the other school uses, it may be appropriate to actually make that a, you know, to look at once we get a set of supplemental regulations for all these educational type of things. Then we can make a decision on whether we feel like we need to permit or do an SS. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Okay, going back to the libraries. Certainly, we have a library on the island. I'm glad we did. That's in the CB district. I wouldn't want to take the possibility of a library out of the CLD. But maybe we do. We've got the one we've got. The O and I is going away. All the residential, public or private libraries, I don't know if we are if we want to regulate the little
Free libraries.
Free libraries.
In their yard.
Yeah. You know, to me, I don't want to regulate that. And, but I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want not having something in residential areas to, you know, for somebody to come along sometime and say, well, for whatever reason, just didn't like something. And say, well, that's not permitted, you know.
Could those fall under another category? I mean, when everybody looks at this and you say libraries, public or private, we all think of brick and mortar places.
Well, yeah, there's a couple of ways you could do that. You could, you could have, you have a supplemental regulation for the residential zonings that's essentially scaled to that, you know, like the supplemental regulation for that library and that is those, you know, take one, give one libraries, and that's the only one that's allowed. And then maybe scale what you want to see as far as a public library based on the one that we have in those other districts. That's one way you could do it. Or you could, you know, and we're trying to have less uses in the table, so we certainly could add one. But, you know, there's another way to skin that cat, I think. If you say like the libraries, public or private, and residential zoning have these supplemental regulations and it's basically the little box on a pole if you take and give. And then the libraries and the whatever other districts you decide on. You know, we could look at the square footage, height, scale, et cetera of the library that we do have and base it off of something like that.
I agree. I think it does need to be defined, because someone, if they could become creative.
You know how, yeah.
Right.
Oh, I want to put a sign here, I can call it a free library by putting a few books, and there you go.
Yeah.
Good point.
So if we do want to allow those, it doesn't seem like that an SS would be the most appropriate thing.
A PS would probably be.
Yeah, because we don't, people don't need to go through the special use process.
It would, yeah, if you have, if you have standards for that, then that would be a PS for the free library. And it could be that all, all of the as we're trying to, all of the other school, all the school type categories could just be under one. We could collapse all those into one and just have the supplemental regulations that apply to if there's something different about an elementary versus a trade, then that could be in the regulations.
Yeah, and I, I think typically the way it's set up is you have, you might, if you do separate them out, you might have something for colleges and universities and then for, for schools like a K through 12 or whatever. And then maybe something for like a daycare type of facility or something like that.
Okay, so I think that takes care of educational.
Just, Madam Chair, clarification. So in CLD for education, we're pretty much going to PS or SS in CLD?
Well, I, I think yeah, I think if we have the rights of supplemental regulations, then we could probably go with PS. But I think making a final decision on that, we need to see what, what Matt comes up with.
Okay.
All right, institutional. First one with a bunch of S's is community or municipal sewage and water treatment plants. Community, I would think would be, although I'm not sure, it's probably not defined. When I think of community treatment plants, I think of the package plants that some subdivisions have. There are some, I think, or there were some, there aren't anymore in Castle Beach. We've never had those and as far as I know, don't want any of those. Now, we do have a treatment plant in CLD off Fish Factory Road. Now, it's the originally Yopon plant and that is still serving our community. And we also have the Swerf. They're on Yacht Drive in 54ish, somewhere in there, which is a satellite place where reclamation facility, I believe, is what Swerf stands for. And that is still in operation. And so we certainly wouldn't want to eliminate out of, that would be R6 and CLD.
What do all the lift stations, where do they?
They're collection pieces, they're not.
But, but how are they defined in our table of uses? What category do they fall under?
So just doing a quick search, it doesn't look like there's a specific one for lift.
There may not be a specific one for that.
Might be a public utility substation in there sometimes. Bear with me.
Public or private utility towers, substations, pumping stations, those are, yes. That is on the next page. All the SS's across.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
See that? Yeah, but the actual treatment plants, we have two. And like I said, one is in R6 and one is in CLD, so we need to leave those there. And
But going forward, do they not also need to have supplemental?
That's what I was gonna say. Going forward, they need that. But we need to get rid of the rest of those S's for now, I think. Now, certainly the industrial district. Should there ever be any property that's zoned industrial district? I think, I've said this before too, I think our whole industrial district is weak and doesn't have I think I need to complete overhaul, but there is time to do that. Since there isn't a property zone that way, if everybody is understanding to that even if something were to come before council, that that would not be, they can certainly do a conditional zone on the mainland. So it doesn't preclude some use that might be considered industrial from happening, but.
So Madam Chair, I'd submit that under R6 for municipal sewage and water treatment, shouldn't that be an SS even if CLD is a PS?
Well, it was what Terry, what I got out of what Terry just said is we should still be an SS for both of those. Okay? To cover those existing, but yeah, we still need to come back and, and have something in place because there could be, we're trying to think about.
We don't want to make what's there nonconforming.
We don't want to make it nonconforming, but we don't want something different in the future.
Got it.
Correct. Okay. Country clubs. Certainly in the R20. I'm not sure if, I know part of the golf course is in the, is in our jurisdiction. And is that part of the, you know, country club? I don't think the facilities per se are there, but I would think that that would be, I have no idea why it's an R9. Because I don't know of anywhere in R9 that you would put a country club. And so I would say we definitely need to take it out of R9 and we're getting rid of SS. You know, there might be and the whole country club thing may have made sense when Williamson Track was zoned that and again, could be again, but I think leaving the country club in the R20 and getting some supplemental regulations and taking it out everywhere else is probably where we need to go. Okay?
Not me. I'm still good.
Okay. Fire stations. We did add back in, in this, you know, I know, and Lisa, maybe you can help us out here. I had looked on the MUNI code online, it's got April 12th, latest edition. But that edition only catches us up through January the 10th. It does not have anything that council did with all the updates that we did through the UDO audit that were approved on the 11th, but that's not online.
The only things that haven't been sent into them are anything we did in July, so.
I know, I know. And, and there's, there's some pieces when you kind of refresh it or whatever, you know, what's changed or something. There's some references to some of that, but at least the online version of MUNI code is, does not reflect what I know has been sent in.
Yeah, it's just listed on the home, like on the first page when you get there. It's not incorporated into the code yet. I mean, I can ask them about it, but.
Right. I mean, you know, for most people going and looking at what, that could be terrible confusion. But yeah, fire stations, we added, we've already added an S to R6 because we have a fire station in R6. Let's really add an S or a P. I think we put a P in there. CB, we have one there, and CLD, we have one there, and then of course, industrial at some future point. But I'm not sure that there's anything in terms of S's for a fire station that
Fire stations seem fairly low risk.
Yeah.
I mean, it's always gonna be a town facility and
Right.
A good public facility to be able to place for, as needed, you know, as the need arises. I would probably
I'd get rid of the, well, like I said, I'd get rid of the S's and just leave the Ps with the R6 and the CB and the CLD because that's, and even the industrial, if that ever materializes. I don't think there's a need to have S's or SS's with fire stations. But that we need to at least have them permitted in the, we used to have them permitted everywhere, in all the districts. Because you don't know when you're gonna need to do a fire station. And I'm not sure why that was taken out in the UDO. Yeah, and of course, you have to put them certain places and do all that other kind of thing. So it may be in the conditional zoning model, may or may not fit that. It may be to our benefit to just go back to what we had before and just make them permitted uses in all of our districts.
I agree with that.
I don't see why we wouldn't.
Well, I wouldn't want one next door to me in a residential area.
What if my house was on fire?
No, no, I, I understand. I'm just saying from a practical perspective. Do we just want them scattered all over the residential sections of the island? Theoretically, I mean, I'm not saying fire stations are a bad thing, so let me go on the public record of not saying that. But what I'm saying is where they should be, all through the residential districts?
Well, they're only, they're only gonna be, in other words, and the regulations change over the years, but they, there's certain distances and whatnot, and it's gonna be where the town can buy property. And, you know, what we've got is what we've got. Will that always serve our needs? And I think that to be, you know, the, certainly the R6 that's there now is on Oak Island Drive. And anything in the, the CB, of course, is, the CB one is in the former Yopon section. And the CLD is in South Harbor. Now, there will be something that needs to go out midway. And there may be something in the future that needs to go somewhere else, but I don't like I said, that's what we had before. We had Ps and everything.
If it'd be helpful to have his opinion, we could certainly reach out to the chief. If it'd be helpful to have his opinion, we could certainly reach out to the chief. And see what his thoughts are on needs going forward, if that would be helpful to the board.
But you're in an R six and if we keep it in R six because we've already got a fire station in R six, Carrie, then. I'm gonna suggest the chief put the next one next door to you.
Okay. I'd feel much safer.
Mm-hmm. Totally.
Pretty much, I mean. Even if it were placed in the commercial district. Most of those border residential anyway, so.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't see because of timing and access and everything else, uh, again, to not belabor the point, let's just ask the chief. But, you know, you're gonna have fire stations on the main arteries for the most part.
I, I noticed in the way just, the PUD is still zoned, right? So wouldn't we wanna have a, a PS in the PUD zone since we'll probably have one in that, a fire?
That is under development agreement and things that were established with that regulations for that PUD, so. That doesn't need to be in the table. They had, the, part of the rezoning was establishing some uses and they pretty much got everything they wanted.
So we'll never have another PUD?
Not unless somebody changes the boards, we've got conditional zoning. We have taken all that out, but it does not. Take out what has been done, preserves what's been done and doesn't do it again. Fraternal clubs and lodges, nonprofit. Now, we have, uh, I mean, when I think about things like that, I think about things like the. Elks Lodge and Moose Lodge, which Moose Lodge isn't in town, but, uh, I don't think it is. Isn't in town limits. The Masonic Lodge, which is. In an R six. And again, that's looking at areas that are. Along the Island Drive or in the, of course, the Elks Lodge is a CB. And, but in terms of, you know, CR. Perhaps CLD, um, like I said, most of our CR has been. Built in a single family, not lodge type situations. And I'm not sure why. The, um, Masonic Lodge should be a. Special use if the others aren't.
It's helpful, we do define this. If, if it will be helpful for the board, we do have a definition for this, uh, in our ordinance. Uh, so clubs and lodges, uh, an incorporated or unincorporated association for civic, social, cultural, fraternal. Literary, political, recreational or like activities operated on a nonprofit basis for the benefit of its members. So if that helps you contextualize where something like that would go, uh, and where it would be appropriate. That's how it's defined currently.
So that's pretty broad and it's way beyond anything that people normally think of as something like an Elks Lodge or a Moose Lodge or a. Masonic Lodge or.
Couldn't the beach, couldn't the beach clubs fall under that definition?
That's why I put that in the group of, you know, looking at beach clubs because, um. If that's not properly defined, that could be, yes. And so they're, they're permitted in our business districts. And it's. Special uses in the R nine, the R. Seven, which is whole beach area. Of course, R six is most of the wooded area. And then R six MF, which of course, we don't have R six MF anymore either, but. I'm sure we, we have had some requests for rezoning that and I'm sure we will again in, particularly on the mainland. But then it's not, it's in all the residential districts on the island except for the mobile home district, uh, which is just odd.
So if they're gonna remain, if we're gonna continue to allow these in residential districts, then they definitely should be an SS. You said we have one condition, the Moose Lodge is in R six.
The, um, Masonic Lodge is in R six, that's on Oak Island Drive.
Yes, on East Oak Island Drive.
Yeah, uh, the Elks Lodge is, uh. In CB, which is, uh, they're next to Beach Pantry. On Dolphin.
I wouldn't see any need for them to be in any residential area, but we've just got the, the one that would be nonconforming.
Madam Chair, if I could interject, you also have a little further down under the Ps, you have private clubs or lodges, which also have supplemental, so. You might wanna address both of these at the same time, since we're in the non-priority topics.
Yeah, because what's the difference in? The private club or lodges, I'm not sure if that was. They used to have the private club designation was, you know, you pay a dollar a membership to go to a bar that didn't have any food. And, uh. Yeah, so this whole club thing, Matt, how do we get a handle on that?
Uh, you know, from a, from a use standpoint, uh, it's certainly open for board discussion, um. Whether it's nonprofit or for profit or. Can't, a distinction could be made, but, you know, I'm. We could put them together and make sure they all have supplemental regulations and where they should go and just treat them all the same or, uh, have that distinction made. I'm not sure from a use impact. Whether it's nonprofit or private.
Makes any difference.
Practical, you know, effect on the use and where it goes.
I wouldn't think so, um.
That might be one for consolidation, supplemental regulations and depending on. Uh, where this board thinks is appropriate to, to place them in one zoning district, yeah.
I would be good to get them out of residential districts. Can just figure out a way to deal with the one existing condition we have.
Yes, exactly.
I support that.
Yeah, I just don't wanna make the Masonic Lodge nonconforming.
No, right.
And could, could we handle that in a way of making a distinction between? How we define this, those national. Cause even like the Elks, like the Moose if it were in town, uh, those, somehow defining that national. Organization, uh. That would separate it from what some of these other things could become under the way that's defined. Or we just say Masonic Lodge and it can be in R six and that's it.
Well, you can't really define and regulate the use based on the, the person or the organization that's asking for it. It's an interesting idea, but unfortunately it's, uh, not something you can use zoning as a tool for, so. Um, you could keep them like it is and separate them out based on a nonprofit fraternal or a. Private for-profit status, or you could consolidate them and into one kind of club lodge definition. And say, uh. These are where they're allowed, here's the supplemental regulations, I mean, for the one that's in the R six, you'd probably set it up as a special SS. So that way it could continue to operate and then if something, a non-conformity issue were to occur, you know, hurricane blows it down, they could at least come in and ask for a special use permit to reestablish the use after the fact.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do it that way then.
So we're combining the clubs and lodges into one?
I, I think it makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, government buildings, offices. I have no idea why that just happens to be a special use in R twenty. Nor do I have any idea why postal facilities should be a special use in R twenty.
Uh, I have a thought on that, it may be that, you know, the Williamson Track was previously zoned R twenty. And so there may have been some thought that some of these facilities might be located there, so they wanted to make, before it became a planned unit development.
Yeah.
Um, that it would still be permitted in some way.
But what I, but what I would say to that is, uh, if that were the case, they should be permitted just like they are here on the island and in the rest of it. So they shouldn't be special uses, they should be permitted uses.
In R twenty?
In R twenty, yes ma'am. And yeah, we have the little piece of the golf course, county allowing land in the golf course area and they're not gonna buy any land in the golf course area. The only case where that might come up to have. Government facilities, buildings is if the PUD for Williamson Track reverted back to R twenty. And so in that event. I feel like we should keep that there and it should be a P, not an S.
No supplemental regulations?
Well, we don't have supplemental regulations on our government buildings and offices anywhere else. Not sure what that would entail. And those are approved by all, in fact, building, land purchase, everything, budget, you name it, is approved by town council anyway.
So again, that would have to be purchased public property to place those buildings?
Yes.
Are liquor stores considered government buildings?
ABC Store has its own category in the ordinance, so.
It's got a separate category space.
Yeah, if you have a, even if it falls under a broad category, if there's a, a specific one that it, that speaks to it, then you go with the more specific instead of the general.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask one question, just to throw another little wrench into there? So the, um, the post office that we have is actually a contract post office, does that count as a government? Postal facility or not, I, I just don't know. Do you know, Matt?
Hmm. I think, uh, it's, if, as long as it's not like a UPS or a FedEx or, I mean, if it's being operated by the postal service, whether it's contract or not. It's, it's the United States Postal Service, it would categorize that under governmental.
But isn't that a CB anyway?
It is.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just, okay.
So are we saying, what do we decide on the government buildings and postal facilities for R twenty, what do we decide?
Just make it a P because of what might, or might not happen in the. Williamson District in the future. And I'd say the same for the postal facilities.
Would the difference be between, uh, that's more of like a retail, small location versus. Where they're bringing a large amount of trucks in, sorting mail, like a hub type situation?
Do you think we're gonna have a postal hub?
I don't think so, but I, I've been surprised before.
Natasha.
Okay.
Natasha.
I don't think so, I don't think it would be the highest and best use of land, but.
Natasha.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I support Natasha's thinking and I don't think we should make zoning decisions on who doesn't wanna come here. I think we should make decisions on what our LUP says and what the townspeople want. You know, if we were to decide that we don't need to have drive-throughs because a Taco Bell doesn't wanna come here.
Well.
You know, that's the logic you just expressed about, does a post office wanna locate here? I don't know, they may wanna locate in midway on Williamson Track, but.
Well, and they are, the type of, I would think the type of facility that Natasha's referring to. Uh, would be looking for industrial zoning on two eleven and it is permitted in industrial zoning.
To Lisa Stites' question, governmental postal facilities are permitted in CB. I would call a postal processing plant a government postal facility. So I think Natasha's comment shouldn't be dismissed.
Well, then we need to separate. We need to somehow define. That type of facility as different from a post office.
Yeah, where you could, uh, set your supplemental regulations to say in the CB, it's limited to the size, this height, this requirement, et cetera. And maybe have something larger for what, uh, Mr. Callahan and Natasha's bringing up. Have a higher allowance in the CLD where it would be big enough to, to fit this type of facility, but on the mainland. It would be limited in square footage or size or however it, it ends up being done to make sure that one of those isn't put in, right? So, I mean, if we say it has a government postal facility in the CB and the supplemental regulations is, is capped at, you know, like four thousand square feet, you know, that, that's not. That facility, that scale, um, so that, that's the direction you would probably go for something like that.
Could you not make those two, like government buildings, offices, including post offices, and then the other one, government postal processing facilities? If you separated those two and then you could specify.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah. So include post offices with government buildings and offices and postal processing as a separate to Natasha's point.
And that's what I was getting at, when I was saying not to, to do that with the. Trying to make that distinction, to know it's, it's not. People, people think of the two different things and so. You don't wanna confuse that, you want to separate them so that people know what you're talking about.
So we're, so we're saying on government buildings, including postal, it would be permitted in R twenty? Is that what we're all agreed on? But the processing would, we would strike that in R twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
And still those would need some, even though it's permitted, it could be permitted with standards, or permitted with supplement. He used to call it permitted with standards, permitted with supplemental regulation so that, uh. Matt can capture the height and square footage and some of those kinds of things he was talking about.
Supplemental regulations in what zones for processing?
Um, CLD and, and, and the ID if that ever. Somebody ever wants to use that.
So those will become PSs as opposed to Ps, correct?
Correct.
And then CB? Did you say you were removing it?
Yeah, it's just B and CB, yeah.
PS and CB?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And CR for processing is strike?
See, I'd strike that, that's, doesn't even make any sense. Okay. Um. The Military Reserve National Guard is only an S and O and I, if we're gonna get rid of that, we really don't need to worry about. And it is a P in industrial, if that fortune materialized. Uh, as well as the penal and correctional facilities being an S in ID, I'm not sure. Why that would be an S with all the other things that are being permitted in that district. Or if that even needs to be in anywhere, I'm just not sure. Like I said, I think the whole ID, industrial district needs a complete rethink and overhaul, um.
I, I think that it could be considered in the airport district. Possibly.
What, like a National Guard Center?
Yes.
I'd certainly wanna reach out to Hallie about that, but I agree.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
I, I know they have programs over there, I, I can't think of, uh, the name of it at the moment, but.
Yeah, I don't know that they have a full-time center.
Right, there's not a full-time center to my knowledge, but, uh.
Might be in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so yeah, let's, Matt, if you can make a note to ask Hallie about the National Guard Center in, uh, AD. Or even CLD for that matter, cause they've got property in both.
I do.
Um. And, you know, strike the O and I, and then on the penal and correction facilities, uh. Are there standards that need to go with that if it remains in the ID or?
I would certainly think that some supplemental standards would be in order if it remained in there.
Yeah, so let's, let's get some SSs in there, SSs. Um. So that's all the SSs on that page. There are no. There are no Ss on the next page, because most of this is the industrial district. Which again, I think needs a careful, separate look at some point. And then we get down to recreational, and we have our public athletic fields.
Do any of those currently exist in the R twenty, R nine, and R seven?
Well, again, the R twenty may be a reserve for later. For Williamson, there's certainly nothing in, or nothing that's going to be in the Oak Island Estates. The R nine and the R seven, because I think all of our... Yeah, I don't know if something that's in R nine, and I think all of our beach area fields are actually zoned CR. Is that all right, Matt? I'll look at the map, right? But then how do you, how you would define an athletic field, you know, all of the... And see, the other thing that just kind of slays me on this is, we have Bill Smith Park, and it's in CLD, and it's blank. We certainly need to correct that.
Yeah, so, you know, just from my thinking on this, you... Certainly athletic fields probably have, you know, if you have a big ball field, you know, you have a baseball game, people are cheering and stuff like that versus the park. You know, those are certainly, could be considered two different uses.
I would consider them to be two different uses, because you're the guy that makes the decision.
Right, and we don't currently define public athletic parks in any way, so that, an area we should probably address as we work through this. It'll really boil down to the definition on that, because, you know, I'm sure someone will come up with a athletic field that I've never thought of before, that's a very small grass pickleball court or something like that. I don't want to like get in the realm of the absurd here, but, you know, there's new recreational uses coming out all the time, I guess is my point. So making sure that definition is tight, and then deciding where it goes, you know, where it's placed from there might be a good idea.
And the distinction between, somebody could have, I mean, I guess somebody could interpret this as, even though it's privately owned, they could open it to the public, it would be a public field. And what if, you know, when I think of athletic field public, I think of the town stuff.
Towns, yeah, that's right.
And so if that's not clear in a definition, I think that needs to be made clear.
Yeah, I mean, we would have a commercial and then a public, basically is how that's set up. So even if it's open to the public, if you're charging folks to use it...
Yes, but we certainly need to permit those with whatever standards may or may not be appropriate. Again, if it's for town facilities owned and operated, then that whole process, I don't think needs a special use permit on top of it. But there could certainly be some supplemental regulations.
So Matt, your recommendation is, is to come up with a definition, once we agree on a definition, then decide the best designation for it?
Yeah, because, yeah, like I said, I wouldn't want to be in a position where the rec board comes up with some new recreational idea that we've pigeonholed into a special use, even though they've gone through, you know, public input and actually developed the new athletic field or whatever it ends up being. So I think the definition's kind of critical on this one.
And just to add to that, because the Bill Smith Park is actually primarily spray field. It happens to have an athletic field on it.
True.
Need to take that zoning into consideration too.
So we shouldn't add a P to CLD based on Bill Smith, is that the point?
No, it's just a matter of... I think, well, I won't try to speak for you, at least, but I think the point was that that can be involved in the whole athletic.
Yeah, just keep it in mind as you're, you know...
As you're doing the definition. Okay. All right. Next page. Bowling alleys? Do we even want to keep those in CB? Or do we want to have regulations, supplemental, CR? I think we have one coming to us in CLD. And the size or what have you may be able to attract from a more regional area, I don't know.
But why would we have anything in CB, just based on, why would that be an S in CB?
Seems like that wouldn't be permitted in that.
That's, that's my thought, I think we should strike that.
I think we should too.
From CB and CR? And just let them in CLD? Like I said, I believe we're going to get one in CLD. Is that not right, Matt?
Makes sense, I think.
We do have an application for a recreational building on the CLD, that's right, up near Loews Foods.
Yeah.
Everybody go to that?
So is that, is that a P, no supplemental regulations around it?
I think it needs, needs an S.
Yes.
Yeah.
Bob has already given us some recommendations on that.
Not about the...
Not specifics.
Not about the, the supplementals that address it.
You can ask David, he can answer.
On that level, Matt? Supplementals for bowling alleys?
In CLD?
I mean, you can certainly develop some, you know, the... Similar to what we've discussed on everything else, if there's a scale, a height, or a size. In this instance, we don't have an existing one to refer back to, to scale that, so it'll take some tweaking to figure out what works and what doesn't, yeah.
I think it helps guide, we're hoping Oak Island is gonna go and offer some protection for future development, which is what I keep hearing that we don't have. So I would, I would support having some supplemental regulations for anything else that comes on.
Okay.
Yeah, I would too, because I know...
And, well, and keep in mind too, that if we've got something that's in the works, we'd need to... I believe it'll be something of a scale that, and of course, in that area. Anyway, we're not trying to create non-conforming uses. Trying to look at any supplementals with that in light of what may already be applied for, and I know even with the beach clubs, when we're dealing with that, that was the approach that we took in the additional regulations that were put in place to govern those in addition to the overlay, in addition to making them only available in the overlay district. We tried to craft those with what was, what was already coming at us and had been, and applications had been submitted and approved. So we'll get some supplementals on bowling alleys and... Community center is the next S, and again, that is in my mind tied with the beach club issue. That is what we, that's how they came in under the previous ordinance. And so not only having the S there, I'm not sure why they're permitted in CB, CR, CLD, if they're... Because I think a community center is something that can be for a subdivision or something that can be for, you know, the entire, I think the definition would be important with that one.
Yeah, and this one's complicated by the fact that we have two community center definitions in our ordinance right now, one for public and one for private, even though they're lumped all together in the table.
Right.
It seems, you would want to separate those out in some way.
Can we un-knot that? Can we separate that?
In the table? Absolutely, as long as, uh... It's like we talked about, other things, separating out the public use and the commercial use.
Yeah, because I certainly would want the...
Because we have a public community center.
We want the supplemental regulations for the private uses.
But we have a public community center in R six right now, right? Our own.
The rec center is in the R six?
Rec center's in R six, yeah.
But there's no, it's not listed here?
Eight oh one is in CR, and the building right out here is in CB. So, yeah, we need to separate those out and get that squared away on the supplementals for the private, and get the separation for the beach club. Good.
So we're holding that out until we make these separations, is that what you were saying?
I mean, all that's got to come back, you know, if that would be something that would come back to us, all of that.
Coming back as in revising the definitions?
Yeah, right.
No, Matt would be bringing back to us all the things that we need, the definitions, the regulations.
But we can say where we want those things, right, today?
Well, and again, depending on how that separates out and what that looks like, it may be like some other things we've talked about, we may want to...
Like athletic fields, we need to have a definition.
We need to have something in order to...
Definitions, then we can decide.
And the definition and the regulations, then we can just make a better decision of where that needs to go.
Do y'all want to know the existing definitions that we have for public and private? I'm not saying these are adequate.
Don't confuse me. I was gonna say, don't confuse me, but go ahead.
Okay, so, public community center is a land use or a building owned and operated by the town or nonprofit organization, such as, it obviously wouldn't be limited to these, but a church, YWCA, or civic organization devoted to providing recreational and educational facilities to the general public without profit. Community center private, this one's much longer, so bear with me, is to include but not limited to beach clubs, cabana clubs, property owners association facilities and similar type uses, a building or facility owned or operated by an incorporated, unincorporated, chartered association, or an individual, or individuals nominated by such entities for the purpose of engaging in social, civic, educational, recreational, cultural, or similar activities, but not primarily for profit or to render a service that is customarily carried on as a business, that the use of the building or facility shall be used solely for the benefit of its members.
And see, that's, you know, that includes the beach club, and that is permitted in CB, CR, and CLD, but it is only permitted in the overlay district, which is in only the CR and only a small part of it.
Yeah, so...
All that needs to be cleaned up in this process.
Agreed.
And a beach club could be structured as a nonprofit?
It is a nonprofit.
Well, I guess it is.
Yeah, the way, yes.
So let me, just to reaffirm, Madam Chair, you said that the beach clubs we currently have came, were approved under the existing current community centers use? Is that how that happened?
It was, it was a private community center in the old code, not under this code. And that private community center had all the other supplemental regulations, special use regulations, supplemental regulations that went with it, and that's only allowed in the overlay district, which is... You have to blow it up really big to be able to see that on here. But it's, it's essentially one block of CR out here from Fortieth to Sixty-first at the time, I think. But should also leave out a section of the cabana, which never got, not within eight hundred feet of the cabana was one of it. Try not to jam that up on various things. But yeah, all that, all that was just... Needs to get fixed. Okay. Go-kart track, we used to have go-kart track, actually, in CLD. That certainly needs supplemental regulations and, or needs to go in with however we're going to accomplish the... That was the other thing about the commercial recreation establishments being one of the things that's go-kart defined, and now it's separated out here and has no supplements. So that's a piece of getting that all, whether we're doing it... And Matt, what do you recommend? Do we put it, do we, do we group those types of activities under commercial recreation? Do we do the indoor-outdoor split, do we?
Yeah, I mean, I think you do indoor and outdoor, you do a commercial and a public recreation, seems logical to me, absolutely.
So that will come back to us with some, in that vein, and with some supplemental regulations. And that could certainly be different mainland versus... There'd be some uses I would think that you'd want, and I guess you could do that in your regular, in the supplementals, that certain ones even, you'd have outdoor that might be appropriate in CLD, but not in, not on the island. Golf courses? We do have a golf course in R twenty. We don't, part of Oak Island Golf Course is in RR twenty.
But not R nine, right?
But not R nine.
Strike S golf course in R nine?
I would strike S in golf course R nine, yeah. The driving range is not accessory to golf courses? I suppose that could be indoor and outdoor. And I think we do not... They're permitted in CLD as is? I'm not sure if any part of the drive, of course, the driving range of the golf course is included with that.
A driving range not accessory to the per golf courses, why would any, why would those be in any R district?
Yeah, the only thing I could think potentially would be Williamson Track.
I think we should remove them.
But I think removing them all is... And then the question becomes, do you want any, they're just permitted straight up in CLD now, so, yeah. Still want to get those standards, whether, correct?
I think so.
Is that Matt?
So PS or SS?
You know, I'd like to do as much through PS as we can. If you can come up with sufficient regulations, then that eliminates what can oftentimes be
Okay.
Just an additional exercise that derives no benefit. Okay, horseback riding, Dave?
Madam Chair, if I may real quick?
I'm sorry.
So within this recreation group... So within this recreation group, did we say that, Matt, you're gonna go through here and regroup by indoor/outdoor? And make sort of subsections and then move some of the, okay, okay, just wanna, sorry, Madam Chair, just want to be clear on that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and I'm not. I'm sorry, but, so horseback riding stables, um. I guess would be another one of those outdoor activities. I'm sure it was probably in R twenty.
Why is it in R twenty?
Because the Williamson Track was on R twenty previously.
That's not now, right?
No, it's the, it is the PUD, um.
So.
And so the question is, do we want to allow horseback riding stables anywhere? And I think if we did, and, yeah, I'm certainly not opposed to it. Somebody has enough CLD land, um. Yeah. Most of the horseback riding stables I know of in this area are out, are either in, in Hanover County or out, out, out in the county county.
So SS in CLD is what we're contemplating?
So the, you know, the question would be, is that, is that a use that we include in our outdoor recreation facilities that ends up in C, CLD?
Not to complicate it too much, but also these are usually, in my experience, operated as part of a bona fide farm operation where they're breeding, selling horses, et cetera, and that's defined elsewhere in our ordinance, um, so.
So can we just strike it all together?
Unless we're at risk of someone operating a stable that's not a part of a actual bona fide farm, which is, I've, I've never seen anyone ever do that.
I haven't either, but.
I think it falls under the definition of that, so, um, I think you'd be safe removing it.
Can we go with that?
Go with what? I'm sorry, SS in CLD?
So that it would fall under, remove it.
I think you suggested removing it because it would fall under bona fide farm, yes?
Yes.
So not permitted at all?
Not as a separate, in other words, it would fall under a use that could come under the farming, bona fide farm.
To delete it.
So it's just deleted, right?
Not permitted.
It's just deleted, it's permitted in another sense, not as, not what it's looking here, like you think somebody would just take a piece of land and open up a commercial horseback riding stables and have people go out, but that's not how that typically works. You can do that under, under the bona fide farming, so it's not like it's not allowed, you just have to have a farmer to do it. And so it strikes. But here, because you don't want to single that out as a separate farm activity when it's already allowed under that scenario.
Okay.
That makes sense?
And a, and a commercial stable is largely defined as a bona fide farm operation because that includes the care and the husbandry of animals, uh, that, that falls under, that's a farm use, uh, the way the state defines it.
Yeah, and it's, it's a tax break too. I mean, yeah, yeah, okay, um. So our next S is miniature golf courses. Now, we have one, uh, in CB, and we have had two that I can remember off the top of my head, uh, in the CR district. One of those has, um, condos on it now, and the other one has, um, single family residential on it. But they're just permitted by right in CLD. I would think that we should take a look at a minimum at, uh, having an SS. And I think that was a special, I think that was conditionally used, the, the golf course on, uh, Oakon Drive, uh. I think that was conditionally used when it came through, that was in the nineties, that was a fight. But anyway, in keeping with not creating non-conforming uses for our businesses that we, that are successful and keep, are serving people's needs, and that's certainly an outdoor, but that would come under some specific in those regulations in terms of, uh, how that is addressed so that, uh, it captures having something similar miniature golf situation, but not something else, or not something beyond that.
Yeah, I mean, that's an instance where we do have one on the island, so we could certainly take a look at the, the scale, height, size, lighting, et cetera, and essentially mirror that so that, uh, one, it can continue, and two, if, if there is a new one, it's scaled based on the one that we already have, so you're not having a, you know, something that, that's out of the ordinary.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since the, uh, quote-unquote Myrtle Beach type golf courses are a pet peeve of mine, I'd like to raise this comment that we, we talk about supplemental regulations, and we say, I'll look into that and so forth. Like everything, it comes from the vision, right? Do you want the big type of Myrtle Beach lava, fire, fire, uh, breathing, you know, volcanoes and so forth? Or do you want something like we have at the moment, the Oak Island miniature golf? It comes from the vision, which one do you want, right? But when it comes to writing supplemental regulations, they're not that difficult. They can be done in ten or fifteen minutes, and half an hour at the most, because all you have to really do is go look at another town's zoning ordinance. Go look at Chapel Hill, go look at, uh, Wrightsville Beach, go look at Myrtle Beach, look at their supplemental regulations, and then model hours after that. If, if, if you want a Myrtle Beach one, look at theirs, if you want a Wrightsville Beach one, you look at theirs. It, it, all of this writing of supplemental regulations, it does not take that long. And it, and, and every day that goes by without them, the town is exposed. And that's what it comes down to. So, you know, as part of the kick the can strategy, we'll look into writing supplemental regulations, let's wet, let's keep the town exposed. We're affecting a vision of keeping the town exposed versus writing, writing a free line supplemental regulation to protect the town. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next thing in the list that has an S is a ma.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I don't, where did we end up on miniature golf? CB, CR, changing to what?
Um, that CB, CR, in other words, that is going to be in the supplemental regulations that will, uh, and again, that's caught up, that's caught up in the whole commercial recreation establishment, so forth and so on, how all that gets resolved, but that there would be supplemental regulations based on the existing force that we have now.
So that's an open issue? Or are we saying PSSS for the, in those zones?
Well, we can certainly decide to make it PS or SS, either way.
Yeah, I think we should.
Now, you want to make it SS or PS? Like I said, my, my preference would be, but then again, you might want to see what we've got, uh, and the public may be not interested in being shut out of the process, uh.
Assuming we can create, to, to Bob's point.
You, if you create adequate.
Meaningful regulations, PS would be acceptable, right?
I mean, that's the way I look at it.
Matt, what's your feeling? Can, can we, could we regulate effectively through a PS, a permitted special?
I think so, you know, the, the things you look at, you know, for frame of reference, for, uh, does something rise to a special use? You know, the standards for those special uses, or is it in harmony with the surrounding area, you know, things like that? So unless there's some concern about, you know, that we can't regulate it in, with objective standards in a way that's in harmony, that's when you could consider adding something that's a special use to add that additional, um, you know, more subjective standard to it. And then if there's, you know, instances where there might be additional conditions that aren't listed in the ordinance that would be worked out through council review, uh, with the applicant, I don't know that I've heard any to concerns with this particular use that would, would rise to that standard, but I don't, I don't know, that's kind of a, once again, a subjective policy decision of whether you want to add that level of review on to one or not.
Bob, what's your opinion? Should this rise to the level of public hearing and whatnot for a, a miniature golf course?
If you have the appropriate.
Or can we proactively create?
I, I don't, I don't see why you would need to have a special use permit quasi judicial hearing. I mean, you would if it was going to be in a potential area. It, it, it goes like this, um, it's kind of a, take it up one notch. You have permitted and not permitted, those are your choices. Now, the special use permit is this gray area that the state legislature lets you put in between, which says, well, it might not be permitted, it might not be a good idea, or it could be a good idea. Well, how do you regulate that? Well, you bring it to your town council, you, you have a quasi, you know, it has to be very legal, I mean, zoning is, is due process and governed by the constitution. So you have to have a very legal approach to it, and then you can put conditions on it. So, I mean, to use, use a tangible example, the Boardwalk Hotel, somebody would say, that's beautiful, somebody else would say it's too big. Somebody else would say it could be shorter, or, or, or something like that. Well, our S, the S that we had in, in the column allows for only four things to be checked to, at the, at the, and so the legislature allows for that. And that's why I say the S is basically a P for permitted. And so you, the, the state legislature still, they allow you to put supplemental regulations on it. And that's how you go from P permitted to, to no, it's not permitted. You, you, you might put this, uh, supplemental regulations on it to, um, add some conditions, like the Boardwalk Hotel, using it as an example. Somebody might say, well, if it was only twenty-five rooms, that would be a nice place, or it's too big right now, twenty-five rooms would make it smaller. Maybe, uh, uh, square footage would make it a better place. Somebody else may say it could, it could be bigger. But when you have just the S, you're leaving it wide open, and so you either have it permitted or not permitted, or you regulate it in the, in those cases where it, you know, it's, it's the right size, or the scale, or the right colors, and, and, and on and on. I'm exaggerating when I say colors, so.
So, so, so to my colleague, Bob, I'm asking that question because you said this was kind of your hot button area, right? So I think, do we want to PS this or SS for miniature golf?
Would the, would having the standards read to you help? Because that, you know, you can say, oh, if there's, if these are the four standards and criteria they have to meet, is that material to this particular use? Just offering that out there, if that would be helpful.
I personally feel like, I feel like a PS could be appropriate here, but I would like to see that in CLD as well. Assuming we, we build those standards around what they look like, what they should be, and if that's all known right up front when an applicant comes in, and I, I don't, I mean, for miniature golf, I don't really see SS as applicable, that's my opinion, that's why I was asking Bob, because he's concerned about that, and I appreciate that. So that, but that's my thought, I don't.
And that's, and there may be some, some, um, some slight difference in situation in CLD and with CB, so, but you could put that in the regulation in the cell.
Now, what, where would one of, when, where would one of these go from a, the CR zone, physically, does that even work?
Well, like I, like I said, the only reason that I can figure that was CR was there is because they've been in CR zone before.
I'm thinking about the future, so, what would we want?
Well, and, so if they, if, well, and, and so do you want them in CR, or do you want to continue to have, um, just single family residential in CR is basically what that's turning out to be.
Yeah, I don't think we need mini golf in a residential area. So CR would not, we can strike that, from my opinion. Anybody else?
That's fine.
Yeah. So would be a PS in CB and CLD?
Mm-hmm.
And if we only had. If we didn't put it in the CB, our current one would be non-conforming.
Not gonna put, we're not, we're not going to recommend making our current uses that are serving as well non-conforming, period.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I couldn't hear you.
As a, we are, I say we.
Fine.
I suggest, because I don't want to speak for everybody. We should not, how's that, going to make an existing use that serves this community non-conforming?
By taking it out of CB is what you're saying?
Correct.
No, I think what we said was take it out of CR.
Right.
Okay.
Madam Chair, when you, when you turned your head, I couldn't hear you at that point. Are, are, are you recommending sort of this policy of the planning board that would say, don't make it, don't take an action that would make something non-conforming?
There can be some things that rise to that level, Bob, certainly. Uh, I just don't think that, I think the message from the, the town council in, in July was that our existing businesses, uh, we need to look at things with an eye towards, uh, anything that would be supplement, that would be an SS or a PS and not a P, should be with an eye towards not making those non-conforming.
Okay, just like to, when some people are for things and some people are against things, I just like to clarify. So the policy that the town council has told us has been, don't take actions that could make something a non-conforming use. I didn't hear that from town council, I'm glad you clarified it.
Well, that's what I got out of their discussion. And if I am misinterpreting that, uh.
Well, misinterpreting something.
Welcome to be corrected.
Madam Chair, misinterpreting something and making it a policy of this board, whether it's an undercurrent policy or a, or a, or a, uh, explicit policy, it's a anti-professional planning, town planning, to say that you can't make something non-conforming. And for you to, to, as a chairman, to sort of make this statement that we can't do that on this planning board, or we won't do that, or we can't even discuss it.
That we should not, we, in my opinion, we shouldn't do that.
Okay, so now it's your opinion, thank you, Madam Chair, it's much different than the, the town council mandated.
Uh, well, the reason why I think we shouldn't do it is because of the comments about non-conforming uses by the town council.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
But I mean, is it even possible, Matt, from a, from a public policy perspective, to have a good ordinance without making something non-conforming at some point when you're managing the kind of growth that we are managing? I just want the public to be clear on that. I don't know that it's possible for nobody to ever have a non-conforming situation based on trying to manage our planning and zoning in this town. I'd like your comment on that.
I don't know that I'm even prepared to think that deeply about that issue right now, I apologize for that, but, yeah.
But I mean, have you ever worked in a town where you didn't have non-conforming situations? Let me ask the question differently.
Sure, uh, I mean, no, we have legal non-conformities in the field right now, that's right.
Okay, fair enough, that's, that's, that's just what I want to make clear for the public to Bob's point. I understand what our council feels about it, but I think we all have to, you know, I go by, I live by the, the windshield is much bigger than the rearview mirror. And so we've always have to be thinking and planning and zoning about where do we want our town to be? And, and non-conforming is an uncomfortable situation, I totally get that, it's very uncomfortable. But hopefully, we can make sure that those decisions to do that are well thought out and are strategic in nature, that are for the benefit and in best public interest.
Well, and like I said, we have certainly made, intentionally made uses non-conforming, uh, to that end. Carrie, the most, the most direct and I would say the most consequential in the last 25 years has been to make, to take multifamily off the island.
To take what? I'm sorry.
Take multifamily out of any of the island zoning districts and the R6 MF that was zoned to zone it R7 and say that what we have on the island is enough. But when we did that, we also, in order to do that, do a stop here and no further, we also made what was existing and already permitted to build on the island, wrote it into the code, which continued, all of that carried over. So that those properties really aren't legal non-conformities. They are still conforming, essentially, is what it does.
Understood.
And yet, there are, there are, there are, there are times and reasons for doing that. But as a rule, I do think it is good procedure. And of course, we'll get stakeholder input as well from all of this. This is us giving our feedback on the special uses this morning of how the public feels and how the business owners and property owners in the business district feel in the chamber and everything else.
Okay.
I, I just have one question, Matt. So just to clarify, when something is being non-conforming, what is the percentage again? Is it 50%? Over 50% or?
It depends on which regulation you're talking about. There's legal non-conformities for KAMA, flood hazards and zoning.
Out of flood.
Flood. If it's just based on a zoning regulation, our current threshold is 75%, except for single family homes, which are exempt from legal non-conformity.
So in the case of the miniature golf, would that account for the building only? Or would it account for the entire golf course and the building?
So it accounts for the depreciated value of any structure on the property. So you have to look at the cost of the actual installation of the golf course as well in that instance.
Right. So it would take quite a lot.
Doesn't take the land value into consideration?
Not the land value, but any improvements. And the, the golf course would count as part of the improvements, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it would take quite a lot to, I mean, I would think a tsunami might do it, but.
Let's see what that depreciated tax value is right now.
Yeah.
Can pull that up in this meeting.
And to clarify, Matt, you just said, single family is exempt, but there's a different rule around non-conforming for single family, right?
That's right.
I don't, we don't want to confuse the public, right?
No.
That there, there is a non-conforming threshold for single family residential in a different zone.
Yeah. For flood zones, KAMA regulation is 50%.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Just going to throw out there, because we have a lot to go through, we do have a time limitation. I need to leave in about 30 minutes, so.
I was just getting ready to say, I need to leave at 11:30. And if Matt needs to leave at 11:30, then.
No, Matt said 11, right?
I just said about 30 minutes.
11.
Well, 30 minutes would be 11:30.
It's okay. It's okay. We've been going at it for a while.
11:30. Okay. Yep. Thank you. And thank you for having an appointment, so we can.
Can we take about a five minute break?
How about a 30 minute break?
Can we, can we do this? Can we wrap up the recreational? There's not much left here. If we can stay out of the weeds and say that we've done some good work this morning and gotten this far and pick up the rest at a future date.
I'd like that date set, though, Madam Chair. I agree with that.
Well, let's finish up with the, the next thing is nature walks. It's got an S in OS. I think that should be, if we're going to have that, and a lot of that would be on public land. But still, by the same token, I think we need to look at some. I'm not sure what we'd. A lot of the nature walks, looking at, you know, residential areas, doing their thing. But we also have what I would consider to be a, I don't know how that's considered with something like the preserve or some other entities that are out there. I think we're missing some places where we need to have nature walks, at least potentially. And the, the, the S for nature walks in open space has typically been, you've got to get KAMA permits. And we haven't typically gone beyond that, whether there's a need to do that for nature walks and whether they're public or private. I think we need to, I think it's different if it's part of a develop, planned development versus.
Yeah, so for something like a major subdivision or a planned unit development, you know, a nature walk can count towards their recreational open space requirement. That wouldn't necessarily need to be called out as a separate use of the property. That's a part of that development as a whole. I think to your point, it's probably a good idea to consider this maybe under public, private, outdoor recreation, whether there's a standard for one or the other.
Yeah. So let's put that in that public, private, outdoor recreation consideration, because it's, it's, to me, it's confusing thinking about doing something separate from what would be the town recreation program type of facility or a subdivisions or a larger site developments, inclusion in their plans. Part three golf course, we do have one in CLD and I think we could probably strike the R20. And the privately owned outdoor recreation facilities, of course, that will be captured under doing those two classifications, as will the public recreation outdoor facilities on the next page. And then we have skating rinks.
Matt, Madam Chair, before you go too much further, I wanted to interrupt. Sorry. What, what do we think is a privately owned outdoor recreational facility? And we might, there might be some narrow uses that fit that, but what could that be expanded to? I mean, is that a zip line? Is that a aerial park? What would, what's in that category?
I understand it. Bob, it's not defined now and the purpose is to define it, not to expand it, but to, or separate it, separate out uses. But unless there are particular uses that we need to separate out that aren't under that.
So, Madam Chair, are you saying that our job is not to define the category, but to, to determine if it needs a special use permit or a district that it belongs in?
No, I'm saying that we have said before that, Matt will come back with those two categories, whether private, public, whether indoor, outdoor, defined and how that, once we have that, then where we're going to allow that, where we're not.
Fair enough. So we, we don't, I think there's a huge, as we said before, right? I believe we're just trying to kick the can, but I'm backing off of that. I just, but with that as a backdrop, we don't, these things, because they're loosely worded and they have a, an S, they are really at risk. And so I'd like to get them defined and then it'd be, then this board could then properly zone it once it was defined. And until then, it's a risk.
Well, and, and that's, that's what I thought I said, but that's what I think is, is going to be done, Bob. So thank you for clarifying that. Skating rinks. I can't imagine why you'd have a skating rink in the CR. But I do think that in terms of permitting in CLD, that that may again be something that certainly the only outdoor, usually you have ice skating outdoors. We're, I don't think we're in any danger of having to deal with that. Skating rinks are typically indoors, although we may want to clarify that in our definition of the indoor, outdoor and the recreation. But I think we can safely keep that under any indoor recreation that with the supplemental regulations as to perhaps square footage of the facility and other appropriate caveats. When Matt brings that back to us, that CLD is going to be the only district that we're looking at there.
And does that need permitted stipulations or supplemental?
Yes.
PS?
That would come in.
In CLD?
All the other things.
Gotcha.
And then water slides, we have some supplemental regulations to that, certainly. As I recall, when we were going through the audit, we were not happy with the regulations on the water slide, but said, saw that as something to come back to later. Yes, we have some. I think they should be incorporated in our outdoor regulations and certainly in CLD. I'm not sure the CR wouldn't, might not be an appropriate place in some areas. I doubt anybody's going to build a water slide on an oceanfront property, but it'd be kind of interesting to see a water slide into the ocean, I would think. I mean, people come up with all kinds of ideas. And we have, again, I get the rearview mirror versus looking forward, but looking forward, I think some people would probably like, again, likely to like, again, because we have had a water slide in this town before in CR. And again, it, those properties kept getting, kept getting built out with multifamily and now single family residential. So we don't have that, the commercial recreational space that we need. Maybe at some point, somebody will decide to change that.
So Madam Chair, are you suggesting theoretically in CR that that SS goes away?
I'm suggesting when we see what the, what the regulations are and that it's certainly CLD, people seem content to push everything off on the mainland, but that that might be something to consider in CR, depending on what those regulations turn out to be.
Well, as my grandfather always said, they're not making any more land. And I don't think our island's getting any bigger geographically.
But again, just because we have certain uses in certain places in certain zones doesn't mean that's always got to be that way.
Correct. Agreed.
Okay. Our next regular meeting is, let's see here.
Seventeenth?
It's the 17th. Next week's first week in August. And there's a town council meeting on the 8th, comes early this next month.
Madam Chair, it's probably worth considering that we'll have new members, at least one new member of the board.
We might have three. And so quite frankly, I would prefer for August special meeting to be after our planning board meeting. And if that is the case, then with all due respect, Carrie, I understand everybody's wanting to get things nailed down and so forth and so on. But as Bob said, there may be new members and there will certainly be stakeholder input by our next regular meeting. And so when the board meets on the 17th, there will be ample time to schedule a meeting for either the week of the 21st or the 28th and still meet deadlines. I'm just putting that out as something to consider.
I, I think.
I was just going to say, I disagree. That's why I'm not, I'm not trying to say I'm the busiest person in the world, but I had to, I had to reschedule something today that was not mine to reschedule because we waited so late to make this meeting. So my calendar gets booked out. I'd like to have it on the calendar today.
Even if it's that, those later weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. The 20, is the 24th available?
Well, so if I could just say, I hate to be a thorn in the side, but the week of the 21st is tight. I have a board of adjustment meeting, I have another meeting, and I have two days in conference. And the week of the 28th is wide open.
Okay. Let's look at the 28th.
Okay.
The 30th or the 31st for me.
The 28th doesn't work, Natasha?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
You must know you're going to be reappointed.
No, I don't know anything.
Well, I mean, we have to plan for what we know at the moment, so.
There you go.
Just in case.
Who's available on the 28th? Not you, Natasha?
No.
I am.
On those dates.
I mean, again.
Yeah, I might not be.
We have to do, we have to work with what we know at the moment.
Gotcha.
30th works for you, Natasha?
The 30th, yes.
What about you, Terry?
Works for me.
It's fine for me.
Good.
Tim?
The 30th. Do it if we can start early like we did today.
Okay. Okay. Lisa?
This day, right?
Matt?
Thumbs up. Wide open that week, too.
So that's Wednesday?
Mike will tell us if he's not available.
He'll let us know.
Right. So that's Wednesday, the 30th. Some of y'all are wanting about 8:30, can we make it eight o'clock? Or nine o'clock?
I was going to say, please don't make it eight.
No, no, don't make it eight.
Is nine, is 9:30 possible? And I'm, I may not, I may not be a part of the group, but. I'm, I'm asking because of my daughter.
That, that.
Taking her to school and a couple of things I have to do, right, just before I get here.
9:30 works for me.
I don't know.
That's fine for me, too. As long as I have to complain ahead. Dara?
Well, and again, in, in my situation, the reason why I asked to do earlier if we are going to go a long period of time, because I will, I will leave to go to work that day and I will not be here for a four hour meeting to leave to go to work.
Well, what did we do today? We did.
It because school will be back in session and I will be twice as busy as the three times as busy I am now.
I, I actually propose, and we've done this at work a little bit, that we, we set a start time and an end time for a meeting. And whatever you get to in. start time and an end time for a meeting, and whatever you get to, in that two, if we set it for two hours, at the end of two hours, we get up and go home.
And basically, that's...
And then we, everything rolls to the next meeting, whatever you didn't get done. Is that, is that a reasonable expectation?
And basically, that's what we did with the...
I'm here for the duration, so...
Basically, that's what we did with the...
Just remember that, right?
Basically, that's what we did with the audit meetings, is, you know, because Wes had a certain timeframe.
So 9:30 to 11:30, and then we're out on the 30th?
That work for your work schedule?
Does that work for everybody?
Does that work for your schedule, Dara?
I can make that work.
Okay. Great.
Ed.
Perfect.
But again, it might not make any difference. I appreciate, I appreciate the progress that has been made today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. One favor? All right.